I'm gonna call the Portage County Board to order. Rule call.
All right, we have fifteen supervisors attending in person, five attending remotely, and we have five excused supervisors Barry Jakowski, Supervisor Anton, Supervisor Mua, Maresi, and Soik.
Okay, thank you. Pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic from its ground.
Invocation by Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity, my colleagues, guests, members attending online. This is an invocation, and the dictionary tells me that the invocation means the act or process of petitioning for help or support. And we all find ourselves there many times, right, in need of help or support. And we do that in many ways. It's done for each of us in very unique ways and very special ways. It's very personal. So therefore, out of interest of those very personal ways, and in the interest of inclusion of all people who reflect individually on how they seek help and guidance, I ask that we take this moment to silently reflect on how we can be better, how we can respect one another, and how we can support one another when we all need help. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Review and approval of June 15, 2021 minutes. Motion by Supervisor Dubeck, second by...
Second.
Second by Supervisor Pataki. Any corrections, changes? All those in favor with aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Correspondence?
Space and Properties Chair Jankowski, tour of city county, county city building report, county clerk fill-in, out-of-county resolutions.
Presentations, Parks Director Rose, 2020 annual parks report. I always look forward to these.
Can you hear me?
A little closer.
All right.
Speak up.
Can you hear me?
Is the button on?
I can.
First of all, I don't get the opportunity to come and say hi to you guys with COVID. I haven't seen most of you for a long time. So it is nice to see all of your faces and be able to talk to you in person. I'll try to make this brief. I know you got a Bucks game to watch, some Brewer games to watch. So this is my third year as the Parks Director. And if you'd have told me three years ago that we'd be in the situation we are in the parks, I would have probably laughed at you. When I interviewed for this position, the question they asked me for my scenario was, what am I going to do with the parks with less? And I thought, geez, that's not that difficult of a question, I guess. I must have answered it right because I'm standing here. But I thought, what a neat question to ask if I had to have a different one. And the question I thought would be, Ryan, what would you do if, in the three years that you were here, you had a FEMA disaster, COVID-19 pandemic, and in the middle of that, we're going to throw in a little brain surgery for you? How are you going to handle that? I thought, wow, that would be a great question. How would I answer that? So I actually thought, what would I say? I had no answer. I would have failed that interview. But what I did come up with is, you would just figure it out. Keep a smile on your face and keep going forward. And that's kind of what we did with the parks. There is no playbook for COVID-19. There was no playbook for our parks. I will say, you know, we had a lot of great guidance from the leadership, all of you, Chris, Ray. They gave us a platform to stand on and kind of work from. I will also say that I want to thank all of you, and I mean this sincerely. You didn't get involved in our day-to-day operations as a committee, as a group. You let us steer our ship, and that was very much appreciated because we changed day-to-day, week-to-week. We had things we had to do, and I do appreciate that you guys did not get too much into what we were doing. You gave us great advice, and I think we did a really good job. My goal was to keep the ball rolling. We tried to keep going. We wanted our staff safe. We wanted our customers safe, but we wanted to keep moving with the parks. We did not want to shut down. I don't want to say COVID was a good thing for the parks, because it is something that has costed many lives. But I will tell you this, COVID really opened up people's eyes to how important outdoor recreation, green spaces. If you had an opportunity to come to our parks this year, you have saw something that I've never seen, just people using every facet of the parks, whether it was from canoeing, to kayaking, to hiking, or camping. So we, I'm going to brag, we knocked it out of the park this year. My staff killed it. I'm super proud of them. Our revenues were through the roof. We didn't have anyone call and say we had a COVID outbreak in our parks. Our staff really did a good job to try to keep the parks clean. So today, I just want to touch base a little bit on some of our highlights, and those are on the back page. If you have any questions through the report, you can ask me after or contact me at my office at any time. So on the back, I just have the annual report highlights, and I wanted to share with some of you, with you, some of the highlights that we had. Our camping was twenty percent up over 2019, and 2019 was a very good year for us. That was our highest year. We went to an online reservation system, so that did help with us, less with handling cash, and it made it streamlined, so it was a little more efficient for us. It worked out really well. But camping, we were turning people away. We were full. We were always full. And that has rolled into this year. I think we are actually ahead of where we were last year. So it is a pleasant surprise to see. We'll see how the weather holds out. Weather determines a lot, so if we have a nice fall, I think we'll beat last year's, and that would be quite the accomplishment. I didn't think we could do it, but it's fun to try. Where we did have some setbacks were lodge renters, and that was our decision on that. We did not want people congregating, so we had limitations on how many people could be in the lodges. Yeah, we took a little bit of loss on the revenue, but we thought it was the right decision to make. And overall, everyone understood. Those that we canceled, and we did cancel people's reservations, we did refund them on that because we were the ones making the cancellations. We were forcing them not to come. This year, we did not open our hill, but in 2020, from January 1st to March 15th, we did open the hill. We had a good season with snow. We got lucky. COVID came in after the hill closed, so we were able to generate all that money in early 2020. And then when COVID came in, we actually shut it down for the end of '20 to the early part of '21. Other Standing Rocks revenue that we brought in, so we bring disc golf, mountain biking, dog park, and what else? Yeah, those are the three that I have there. Mountain biking exploded on us. You couldn't even go to the bike shops and buy a bike, but we had made some major changes in our biking trails at Standing Rocks. We've always had mountain bike trails at Standing Rocks, but to be honest with you, they were no good. And you have to admit your faults. Our trails were no good. We redesigned them, and we went from making approximately $5,000 a year on that to almost $20,000 a year. So those trails were paid for by a mountain bike group, Pasta Point Area Single Track Association. They raised the money to design and build those trails. They did all of the work. We did put some signage up on them, but they did all the work, and they have been received very well.
Mr. Rose, does that mountain bike trail, does that have lighting, lighting on portion of it at night as well?
No, the lights are actually, we did 3K of ski lights. That was a donation from Edith in Dallas Pancowski. They purchased all of the materials, and our staff put them in. That is actually on the ski trail. If you do go there at night, and they do ride at night with headlamps, you do get residual light for about 2K of it, but there's part of it that you don't get any light on. But those are designed for the actual cross-country skiing. We also have cross-country running that takes place there, so all of the schools in the area, Ross Schultz, you know, Amherst, we have events, regionals and sectionals that we hold at Standing Rocks Park. They're huge. There's thousands of people that come to those. Unfortunately, last year, we did not allow that. We worked with, WIA didn't want it either, so we had, we had shut those down. They are bringing them back this year. I'm sure there are restrictions. And to be honest, the public did an amazing job. They stayed separated. They did what they were supposed to do, and that really helped us because we watched that. And if that got out of hand, we were going to shut things down, but it never happened. Our boat launch fees and permits, everybody went boating. Everyone bought a boat. Our boat launch fees really increased. A lot of the departments, the DNR included, different counties shut their boat launches down. I made the decision not to. I think it was the right decision. I think people could make sound decisions, stay separated, get their boats, go out and do their thing. So I decided to keep that open. Our Jordan Nature Center, we did not open that because we have people congregating in a small area. The Dewey Shooting Range, again, the DNR shut down a lot of their ranges. A lot of the other counties shut down the ranges. I felt that we could keep our Dewey or our shooting range open and keep people safe, and we did. It wasn't that difficult. So I think we did a great job this year. The revenue was great. I hope Jenny's happy.
She's smiling.
Jenny's happy. We had a meeting. She seemed happy. But we did a great job. My staff did an amazing job. Our seasonal staff followed all the rules, and we're hoping to have another great year, and it looks like we are. So is there any questions?
Nope, I don't think. Oh, I can't. Supervisor Matt Jakowski, there he is.
Thank you, Chairman. Ryan, or Director Rose, I should say. Um, right. Director Rose, I noticed that a lot of our parks have boat landings with extremely high water. Some of our boat landings are in disrepair, or in, I shouldn't say disrepair. They're, they're not usable. Wolf Lake, for example, the boat landing is not usable. Are we looking at doing something at that, or are we just going to sit and wait till the water goes back down? Are we going to wait another year? Just a little input on that, if that's been talked about, or maybe a future parks agenda item?
Yeah, that has come up quite a bit. One of the biggest ones, like you mentioned, Wolf Lake, as you're well aware, you know, you know the lake pretty well. There was no water in there years ago. Now it's, it's full. It's actually one of the nicest beaches we have right now. It's really beautiful there. That lake filled up so much. I know the water came over the road, came up into that, so it was a little bit unusable. Most of the lakes are starting to come down a little bit. We've noticed it at Bear Lake. We've noticed it at Emily now is starting to come down a little sunset. How we fix those, I think we're going to kind of have to wait till the water goes down, because some of them don't have really an alternative to do. We do have a, and I hated to do it, but we had to because there were so many boats. They actually, at Lake Emily, they're using the side in the grass. We made a makeshift one temporarily for them to use because they couldn't use it. So yeah, we're going to have to fix them. They're busted up, and I don't have the answer, Matt, exactly how we're going to do it yet with the water being high, but it is on our radar.
And Wolf Lake's not down. I was just saying.
Oh, and Wolf Lake, I don't know. That could be, that could be out there, yeah.
I was just there yesterday. So.
Supervisors Astro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Rose, welcome tonight. Thanks for your report. Can you give us an update? And I know it's not officially out there, I don't think, but there's talks of, you know, putting a tubing run out and over at Standing Rocks. And I understand the DNR, somebody won't let it go out onto the lake.
Well, it, it's not the DNR. It's, they don't recommend it because of liability reasons. There's no, there's no place that shoots tubers out onto the lake. Not only that, we don't know when it's going to freeze. You have to do monitoring of the ice constantly. We can't drive our equipment out there. I'd hate to have that $250,000 plus piston billy go through the ice. So I had called Risk Management. Their recommendation was, no, don't, we're not going to ensure that. We're not going to take that liability. They called the state. They recommended do not shoot anyone out onto the lake. So that eliminated a lot of the options that were talked about in the past. The Friends of Standing Rocks group came up with an alternative option, has lots of difficulties and problems with it. One of them is that we have a high-capacity well there to make snow right now. I don't know if all of you know this. I know our, our group knows it, our commissioners know it, but I brought it up last week at our meeting. That high-capacity well, there is a divided line right on the ridge that goes through Standing Rocks. It actually divides the Great Lake Water Basin and the Mississippi Water Basin. Our well is on the Great Lake Water Basin side. I can legally not pump any water out of that side and pump it across the hill, so I can't make snow with that. That water all has to go, and that's not a county thing. That's not a state. That's an international pact that we have with Canada and all these surrounding states that that water must stay in there. So I am not going to be the one to pull that water out of there. So the only alternative would be to drill another well, which is just over the hill, take it out of that one, recreate a bunch of stuff, which I don't think is probably the right option for us there. You'd have to clear hills. You'd ruin different activities. So there's a lot that goes into that. So it is at the commission level, and, and we're discussing it. And I'm with, with them in the fact that I just don't think it's doable at our park, so.
Thanks for the update.
Yep.
And as I understand it, it's got a lot of big hurdles to it, and there's not a lot of, a lot of answers. We can want a lot of things, but sometimes they just don't work. So Supervisor Gifford?
That's not a question, just a comment. In my four years on the commission, what really always impressed me was the positive constructive citizen group input, like the Pasta Group building the trails, and then the Cross Country Ski Group, and the Friends of the Park who raised so much money for the new, the new lodge, and just the participation of, and the Learn to Hunt group, you know, it was like one after another. Every meeting, you could count on people not complaining, but coming in with offers to help and fundraising and all that stuff. It was just a good, really good experience.
Yeah. The complaining came in year five.
Is there anybody else have any questions? If not, in my eighteen to twenty years, this is probably the longest park report we've ever had.
So.
Thank you, sir. Number six, we have the introduction of the new EMS coordinator, Andrea Krantz? Krantz? Sheriff? No, I'm not Andrea. Just so you're aware, Andrea had, she had to go home early because she had a child that was sick. So you did get in your packet an introduction to Andrea. She's been here since March. She is very self-initiated and has been a godsend for me for our EMS coordinator. I did want to say, coming up in the future here, you're going to see announcements for the forums that we talked about prior to COVID in regards to getting out to meet our providers along with our EMR groups. Andrea's been out, out there working with all the providers and also the EMR groups for, for getting new members. So I'm very excited. She's been doing a great job. I left a card on your desk, so if you have any questions for her, she will try to make another meeting at a later date. But just so you all know, she, see a picture so you can associate who she is. And if you have any questions, give her a shout. I think the first forum's going to be in late September or October, and designation is unknown at this time. So, but it, we'll be putting that out well in advance so that we can get people out there and see what our EMS system does for the county. Thank you, Sheriff. Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their requests at this time. With such comments, subject to reasonable control of the county board chair set forth in Roberts Rules of Order. Anyone from the public like to speak, please raise your hand. And...
Name an agenda.
Name an agenda. You start with, anybody stand up and give me your name and item.
David Ayden, number thirteen.
David Ayden, number thirteen. Next, who else? Anybody else?
Steve Ellis, thirteen.
Steve Ellis, thirteen.
Linda Wanta, thirteen.
Linda Wanta, thirteen. Anyone else?
Brock Maddox, thirteen.
Brock Maddox. Anyone else?
Keith Karowski, thirteen.
Thirteen? Anyone else? Anybody at home?
Becky Cresson, number thirteen.
Becky Cresson, ah... Can't remember if we had that, if we were taking stuff from home.
It's up to you.
I did it last time, but I wasn't aware that we weren't, weren't allowing it. Wasn't supposed to be allowed. We don't have, it wasn't our ordinance, wasn't it, Dave? That's up to me. All right. Okay. Anyone else? We only got one person from home. That's, okay. Yep. Confirmation of county executives' appointments and reappointments. If there's no objections, I will take them all at one time as printed. No objections. I will take a motion. Motion by Supervisor Madine, seconded by Supervisor Zastro. Any discussion? And I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, out-of-sequence requests for reclassification for Per Human Resource Policy 3.11.46 from Portage County House Night Security Staff.
Resolution number 121, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Health and Human Services Board, Human Resources, and Finance Committees. This resolution approves an out-of-sequence reclass for night security staff for the Health and Human Services Department. This is a budget adjustment and requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Dubeck. Discussion. Are we doing electronic or are we doing a voice vote?
We should just do voice, except for the court of conduct.
Okay. We're going to do a voice on all of them, except for number thirteen. We wanted to try and kick the tires and see if we can get this program. That's why we'd had Craig here tonight as well to try and help work through some of these. But with every, if there's no objections, we'll just do all of them tonight with a voice vote, except for the number thirteen, the last one. So I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two-thirds supermajority vote?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Number nine, budget adjustment for Land and Water Conservation Division to fund the creation of a work plan to obtain water quality information in and around the village of Nelsonville.
Resolution number 122, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Land and Water Conservation and Finance Committees. This resolution approves a budget adjustment to allow for the creation of a work plan to gather water quality information. This is a budget adjustment and requires a two-thirds supermajority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Matt Jakowski, seconded by Supervisor Zastro. Discussion. There's no discussion. All those in favor with aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, revising the process for selling county-owned real estate located in the village of Clover, former, former H2O development parcels.
Resolution number 123, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution approves the revised process for selling the remaining H2O parcels.
Motion by Supervisor Ladek, seconded by Supervisor Splinter. Discussion. Supervisor Madine?
Roughly how many parcels are left?
Approximately four. Stay tuned.
Thank you.
They're going fast. Supervisor Neville?
It says, thank you. It says, the top of the second page, there's a standing committee of Portage County Board of Supervisors. How is that committee established?
I didn't hear her question.
Eldrick, can you repeat that and speak a little louder? We didn't hear you up here.
Okay. On the second page at the top, I'm just picking up in the middle of the sentence, it says a standing committee of Portage County Board of Supervisors to perform that approval. My question is, how is that committee established? How many members does it have?
So, Dave, go ahead.
It's an already existing committee. Later on in the resolution, what we indicate is that all of the final decisions that the staff puts forward after, see, what typically happens is, we as staff members are contacted by interested buyers in these parcels. And those individuals bring forward a written offer to purchase. And what's happened in the past is, those offers go first to the Finance Committee and then come to the county board for additional approval. The only change in the process that is contemplated in this resolution is, we're simply saying, we'll still take it to the Finance Committee for their final review and approval, but then we don't have to continue bringing those transactions to, back to the county board for final approval. And so it's an already existing committee.
And part of that was when we dissolved the KIP, Capital Improvement Committee. I'm trying, I'm going back, and we were charged with selling tax-deed land. This is technically a tax-deed land because it was taken back from, from those parcels. So we had to make sure we had an avenue for it, where the Finance Committee goes and we have, they do a tour, they look at the property, and they say, yes, we're going to take it back. And there's a long process in taking back those, those properties. And then when they sell them on the auction site, these are handled a little differently. So the other reason why it's helpful, if we can get final approval from the Finance Committee and not have to wait until the following county board meeting to approve it, is that we don't want to lose a sale. And we almost lost a sale earlier this year, but we speeded everything up. And that was the one, you may recall, on Monday night before the county board meeting, Finance met and approved it. And the very next night, which almost never happens, it was before the county board. The buyer did not want to wait a whole other month. So that's why we did that one fairly quickly. But this, this process would allow us to shorten up the timeline so that we can get quick responses to the buyers who are interested in the properties. And these have all been very consistent. There hasn't been a lot of deviation. So it's kind of like the roadmap has already been created to some point. So there's Supervisor Madine, did you have your hand up, or was your question answered, or? No. Supervisors Astro?
No. Supervisor Zastro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious, is there a minimum number of acres that must be purchased?
Well, there's...the parcels are already existing parcels, so I think the smallest ones are in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen acres. The other ones are, I think there's two forties that are left. We just received another offer literally yesterday on one of the forties. And then there are two smaller parcels closer to the interstate, which are somewhere between, say, ten and fifteen or eighteen acres apiece. They're standalone existing parcels, so it's not gonna be any acreage size smaller than that. If people want to talk to us about subdividing, we're not really interested in doing that because then you have to survey it, and there's expense, and so far, we haven't had to do that, so we really don't want to start now.
We're getting close to the end, hopefully, on that whole project out there, and we're getting out of the land-owning business for the county, so. Business parks and... Anything else? Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, authorizing a change in scope of work for BWBR Dewberry to include a Phase One feasibility study of the county city building as part of the government facility project.
Resolution number 124, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Space and Properties and Finance Committees. This resolution approves including the Phase One feasibility study to be included in the scope of work for BWBR Dewberry. There is a scribbler's error that we will correct in the "be it further resolved" clause. There is two E's at the end of "resolved," so we will correct that.
Motion by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Dodge. Discussion. Supervisor Jankowski.
This kind of came about due to our survey of this building. When we went through the building, we started talking about, how do you move the walls? Can something fit? What are the new regulations that will say, the court has to have this, the court has to have that? We don't have the knowledge, nor do we have anybody locally that could help us. That's why Dewberry will hopefully give us an idea. Can we put the courts back in this area? Can we do the things that we would like to do, or can't we? And that's why this resolution is before you.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Somebody nay?
I did. Did you get that? Thank you.
Number twelve, establishing November 2nd, 2021, as the official annual meeting date of Portage County Board of Supervisors for 2021.
Resolution number 125, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution sets the annual meeting date as November 2nd, 2021.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Number thirteen, resolution adopting and enacting changes to Section 3.1 of Code of Ordinances, the Portage County Board of Supervisors' structures and responsibilities of standing committees and standing appointments of the Portage County Board, by adding subsection 3.1.51 entitled "Code of Conduct."
Resolution number 126, 2020, 2022, submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution amends Chapter Three of the Code of Ordinances to include a code of conduct for county board supervisors. There are a couple instances of the parallel construction not lining up, so Corporation Council and the County Clerk's Office will work on that to correct it.
I need a motion and a second to put this on the floor. Okay. Okay. I need a motion and a second to be... I'll take a motion and a second to get it on the floor. Motion by Supervisor Ladek, seconded by Supervisor Honle. Discussion, and we have some people from the public that want to speak. Dave Ayden? Yep, I will. I'll read it.
I'm Dave Ayden from Stevens Point. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in regards to Code of Conduct adoption in my brief review of what we have pending here as a resolution to vote and approve. I do see some things that come to question immediately. In part, I almost believe that there's a certain redundancy to adding some of this in regards to the fact that we already have some things in place to adhere to, and that, I guess, would be codified to hold those accountable who may decide to step out of line. For example, where we talk about respect, treat county official staff, county board supervisors, committee, and board members in all public patients' courtesy of ability, respect. Even when there are disagreements, I'm sure that's already in place here. To me, that just doesn't warrant needing this resolution, for one. I have to wonder if the Code of Conduct is designed to squelch public comment on issues at times of divisive nature subject to prosecution under this resolution, which you're currently debating adopting. In the section of honesty, number two, be prepared to make decisions when necessary for the public's best interest, whether those decisions are popular or not. Again, comes back to the fact that we may want to squelch public comment if we don't like where somebody is going with this, subject to prosecution under this resolution. You know, that being the case, is it in the public's best interest if these decisions are not popular? And then why do we even bring these things forward? Personally, looking at this brief review of the Code of Conduct, it seems to me it's redundant, as we probably have these things in place already. I hadn't reviewed the prior Code of Conduct that this would be added to either. So, is it in the public's best interest? I think we need the public to come forward, and many times, people don't. I'm here today to at least have some input, and I would strongly encourage you to vote against this resolution, as I think we already have mechanisms in place to handle some of these things. I guess without further review, at this time, I would leave it as that. It seems, although there is a certain ambiguity in some of the resolution also as to how we would decide somebody's in violation and how we would choose to move ahead and prosecute also. So, again, in my opinion, I would urge a vote against this resolution. Let's leave what you have standing in place as far as our Code of Conduct, and where we deem necessary, investigate any violations and potential prosecution at that time. Thank you for your time.
Steve Ellis.
Steve Ellis from Junction City, thank you. I fear that much of what I'm gonna say is gonna be repeated. I would have rather gone a little later, so I'm gonna just bear with me, this is only about three minutes.
Can you speak up a little bit louder, sir?
I am not opposed to a code of conduct, but this is...this one, the way it's worded, could cause as many problems as it solves. My first concern is that it's somewhat like censorship. These days, there is no way to predict what some people will find offensive. To many people, simple disagreement or a different point of view is offensive. This resolution is an attempt to curb offensive behavior, but is that really an important goal for county business? Personally, I don't think so. For example, I'm gonna skip this. If we censor people with fear of violating a code of conduct, we'll be encouraging exactly what we don't need, people who say one thing and do another. My second concern is the honesty section, which should be completely reworded. There's a sentence in there which states that supervisors should be prepared to do what's best for the county, regardless of whether or not it is popular. This is bad. There is one kind of business, usually not that controversial, such as putting in a covert or managing a solid waste site, where the government is actually enhancing most people's ability to build productive lives. But there is another type of business, usually very controversial, such as shutting down businesses and schools, which, when done, significantly interferes with citizens' ability to lead productive lives. This type of business is contrary to the county's mission statement and should be avoided at all costs. I fear that the honesty section of this resolution will be used in the near future to take us all right back into the same COVID mess that we just got out of. My third concern is the repeated use of the word impartial. None of us are impartial to anything, and UW Stevens Point is filled with professors who will verify that. We all bring everything in our backgrounds to bear on every issue we face each day. It would be more honest upfront to acknowledge the truth of our partiality. The resolution should not advocate for impartial behaviors, because that's not possible. As a solution to the problem of poor conduct, it would be great if you, as a board, would revisit your own mission statement. Every time you stray from the mission statement, providing... The mission of providing fiscally responsible services to the people of Portage County, you find yourselves with conduct issues. Thanks.
Linda Wanta?
I am gonna ask everything that's been said.
Thank you. Brock Maddox?
Brock Maddox from Plover. A lot of the stuff that I was gonna say has been said already, but there's a couple concerning points in here. One of them that...we're gonna ask you to vote no on this Code of Conduct today. Also, that the word equity should be dropped out of this Code of Conduct, and it should be equality. Also, we have an issue with the second bullet point on the honesty section of the ordinance. We believe that telling supervisors to make decisions they know are against what their constituents want is the exact opposite of why supervisors are elected to represent the people of this county. Having it written in there gives the free rein to supervisors to use it as an excuse to push any personal agenda they want, regardless of what the people of this county actually want. We've watched it happen over and over in the past year with lockdowns, masks, restrictions on small businesses, road diets, and bike lanes. So, we're gonna ask you guys to vote no on this Code of Conduct today. Thanks for your time.
Keith Kudrowski.
Keith Kudrowski, Stevens Point. Yes, a lot of things that I want to say have been said. Equity, that word, that word just doesn't belong in anything we do. Equality, equity, sorry. I get one chance to treat people equal. I don't get extra chances to be...treat someone equal. It's a bogus word. Number two in Section D is definitely out of line. If you're gonna impose an ordinance on people that's unpopular to people, I don't even get the logic to that. You work for us. It better be popular. You're working for us. Popular decisions, unpopular decisions shouldn't be made by you if the people feel it's unpopular. Makes no sense. I advise y'all, vote against this. Absolutely unnecessary. Thank you very much.
The last one was Becky had asked to speak, and I was questioning it when last time I allowed someone to speak from my home, and it was reminded the next day that members of the public attending remotely will not have the opportunity to speak during a meeting. The deadline for sending comments is forty-eight hours. It's on the top of our agenda, so therefore, Becky, I'm not going to allow you to speak per our agenda that was pushed forward, so. Those are...sir, those are county board supervisors that are on TV that are speaking, so. Go ahead. Linda Wanta?
Yes. Linda Wanta. Everything that I was gonna say has already been said, but when there is one person that is up there that wishes to speak and has great knowledge on a whole bunch of subjects in this matter, and you refuse to let her talk is unacceptable, because you know who she is and you know how smart she is, and that is why you refuse to let her speak. On the question of equality and equality, equity and equality, equity allows you to develop, enlarge, and supplement, or override rigid or any system of law. That means that gives you the power, and not to listen to the people that you already put in your later statement, of not wanting to go by what the people say. So you're allowing yourself that little underwritten law. Equality means you have to be of a state of equal. The synonym to equality is equivalence and sameness. That synonym does not apply to equity. So if you want to be fair and you want to be equal, then the word should be equality. So you can't change, and it has to be equal. You can't under...give yourself a little nudge room to override a law you don't deem as reasonable, and especially if it's followed in Part D, where you can make a decision that's not in the public's best interest. That's defeating equality and listening to the people. And what somebody had said up here about you working and listening to the people, and this is what the people want that live in this county. So you can't just, a little group, go ahead and change your mind and write it up. So, well, we got to say so, because we think we know better. We live in America for a reason. People are smart. They have thought, and they have reason besides for the decisions they make for themselves. And you need to honor that, and you need to be equal to that. So as far as you being able to make a decision that this business is important, that business isn't important, you want to mandate or change to law that you have to do this, you stay home, you don't stay home, what happens with the school system? No, you can't do that. People have to be able to make that right, and you cannot override the public's interest because you think it's better for them. The people know what's better for them. Thank you very much for your time.
So we have a motion and a second. And I just wanted to be clear that the reason that I can't let Becky Cresson speak is not because I know who she is, and not because she's a smart lady, because we publish an agenda, and I need to follow this agenda. This was put out to everybody, and we all have to follow the same rules. I had made a mistake in the past where I allowed someone from home to speak. It was pointed out to me later, and that's why when Ms. Cresson had even asked to speak tonight, I paused and asked, and they thought it was up to me. Then our corp counsel continued to look through our agenda that is published...
that is published a week in advance, stating all the rules and letting everybody know what they are, was on here and is the one that's always been on here for over a year. So, that's why Mrs. Cresson cannot speak, not for any other reason. So I just wanna clarify that, so. Supervisor Jakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under letter B, fairness number two. Um, when I read this at home when I got my packet, it says, "Make decisions and recommendations based upon research and facts involving county staff and stakeholders and consider long, consider short and long-term goals." I think we're missing constituents in there. I realize. I'll be the first one on the code of conduct. Good thing it didn't pass yet. Sorry about that. So. I think we're missing the word constituents in there. Now, could they be considered stakeholders? That, that's tough. Uh, are, are all constituents stakeholders? No, some are stakeholders. I, I, I just think we need constituents in there, and since we answer to our constituents, I may make a decision that's not popular with somebody from the city of Stevens Point because my constituents maybe aren't, have a different opinion than those in the city of Stevens Point on an issue. So, I think we need to have constituents in there, and since our constituents are who elect us to represent them, I think they should be put in there first. So I'd like to make the amendment that says, um, involving, right after involving, it would be constituents, and then a comma, then county staff and stakeholders, and consider short and long-term goals. So all I'm asking is after involving, that we include the word constituents.
We've got a motion and a second by Supervisor Gifford. Any other discussion on constituents? Supervisor Astro?
Thank you. Uh, this is just a point of clarification for me. Uh, are the constituents not covered under stakeholders?
He had asked that question or stated that earlier, and he said there was a fine line. That's why he wanted to add the word constituents as well.
I'm fine with that.
So if there's no further discussion on adding constituents, Mildred, Supervisor Neville?
I have a question. If, if we add the word constituents, um, to, I mean, who are stakeholders if they're not constituents?
And I could give, and this was my thought on it, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The county may have a stakeholder, and a stakeholder in the county may be an investment firm from outside the county, which is none of our constituents. So, in a constituent of mine may have an opinion on a subject. They may feel a certain way about a subject, but it may not directly affect them. So therefore, they're not a stakeholder in it. So that's where I, I kinda thought we need to include the constituents.
Supervisor Robbie?
All of our county residents are stakeholders. However, they help some people to distinguish it. I don't think it hurts folks because we're, our constituents, I think stakeholders refers to constituents, but they help some people to further delineate it. I don't think it's harmful to put it in there at all.
Any other?
I think you could take constituents and take out stakeholders. But, you know, if it, if it helps people, then I don't have an issue with it. But I think stakeholders covers it.
Supervisor Neville?
That was my thought, was that stakeholders. I mean, I thought stakeholders, I thought that was constituents because in some sense, everybody in the county is affected by what's done. So I don't know why we need the word stakeholders if we put constituents.
So we only have one, one, one motion on the floor right now for, uh, one amendment, and it is to add constituents unless, uh, Mr. Jakowski would like to do anything else with it or amend his, his motion, uh.
I would leave stakeholders in there because there are, are people from outside the county that, that may be stakeholders. You know, we could go back to argue the fact that, uh, B.R. Duberry is, is one of the stakeholders in the game. You know, they, they're a consultant firm that works for us. They're a stakeholder in the game. Um, the people that come to us and advise us on financial situations, on our bond sales, they're a stakeholder. So that's, that's why I differentiated the constituents versus stakeholders.
Supervisor Johnson, you had comments to add. I see you shaking your head, but you're probably just agreeing.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just agreeing with Supervisor Jakowski. The stakeholders are a unique group of, of individuals and support the idea of adding constituents.
Any other discussion on the amendment to add constituents? If not, all those in favor with the amendment, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Amendment carries. Back to the original resolution. Supervisor Madine?
Do you have a question for either the author or the committee in the, under fairness, um, equity? How would it change either the intent of the ordinance or the application of the ordinance if the word equity was changed to equality?
Dave, can you help me with that one?
I guess my take on that would be that the concepts of equity and nondiscrimination, which are both mentioned together in number one, are concepts and principles that go together. Um, as I read number three, under letter B, under fairness, encourage diverse and inclusive public participation. Diverse and inclusive is everybody. So I think the notion of equality is in there already in number three, under B.
Supervisor Madine, you had a follow-up?
So how would it change the application of it?
What you're asking is if we change the word from equity to inequality?
Yes, how would it change?
How would it change the intent of the sentence?
Because it removes the notion of, of equity from, from point number one. Inclusivity and, and equality, again, I think is already in there under number three.
I grew up understanding that nondiscrimination is equality. And so, but you're making the case that nondiscrimination is not the same as equality. It is equity. It's a puzzle for me, but I've only had 70 years of those in distinguishing those two terms.
Are you making a motion? Supervisor Madine?
I'm, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get to the.
Okay. Okay, Supervisor Dodge, then Supervisor Gifford.
We had quite a discussion about the word equity some months back. And, um, actually, I did a little research after all of that discussion. There is definitely a difference between the word equality and equity. Personally, I also grew up believing in equality. Equity gives some people maybe some preferential treatment, which I don't believe we should be doing if we're gonna be neutral and objective. If you noticed, I was noted as excused. I had another meeting, so I wasn't, uh, present to vote on this. Um, I would not have supported the change to the word equity is my understanding. It was changed by executive committee. The original, um, writing was equality. Is that not true?
No, that wasn't changed.
Well, that word was added, correct?
No. No.
Supervisor Maresi, add that word?
Supervisor Maresi added the word inclusive under item B three. So he added encourage diverse and inclusive. There was no change to number one, under fairness.
Well, I would not have supported having the word equity in here. And so, therefore, I will make a motion to replace the word equity with equality.
Seconded by Supervisor Lattick. Any other discussion on, uh, we are on B one, changing the word from equity to equality? And we have a motion and a second. Uh, Supervisor Robbie, then Supervisor Honnold.
I'd just like to have someone from the.
Can you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Sorry about that. Um, I would just request that somebody from the committee just tell us why they put the word equity as opposed to equality in there. Uh, I'm just trying to understand, um, if, if we were to take a different word than equity, what word would it be in, in here? So we better understand the difference. I'm not sure that that's correct. So, I, for someone from the group, I'm wondering, why equity rather than equality? If they could expand on that a little bit.
The group did not create the, uh, this was, uh, probably a work product of myself. Uh, Kayla helped, I believe, a little bit, and corp counsel. From what I had originally brought forth, it needed to be massaged or whatever you wanna say. It needed to be gone through, and that's what had happened. And I believe we had a, uh, Tiffany, uh, was one of the, Wonderland was one of the attorneys in the corp counsel's office that was working on it. And then Dave, uh, took a final look at it, and then it was sent over to us.
We were, we were also using models of codes of conduct that we received from various other counties as well. So we were trying to meld all of these together and, uh, come up with a, a product that the committee could discuss and then bring forward.
Go ahead.
Just, I'm sorry, just a follow-up question. So if we took equity out of there, somebody who was in, and I know that sometimes we paste in, and, you know, how we put things together, but if we take it out of there, what are we losing? From the point of view of the people who did present this or put forward, do you have a strong feeling about equity? If so, just some information as to why equity in there is important. I'm not opposed to it, I'm not for it. I just don't know why equity rather than some other word. If nobody has an idea as to why equity is in there, they don't have a reason to say, hey, equity is important to be in there because of the following, then it seems to be a point we could put any word in there. So I'm just wondering, why equity in there? And if we take it out, what do we lose?
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
I just quick Googled a simple definition for equity to address Supervisor Robbie's point. And the definition, the first one that pops up is, it's the quality of being fair and impartial. So if we add the word fairness and substitute that, I would think those meanings would be synonymous.
Supervisor Honnold and Supervisor Gifford?
I'd like to use a simple example of when I think about equity, that it's not the same as equality. Years ago, people who used wheelchairs could not access businesses. They could not access voting sites. There were all number of civic engagement that people who needed a different kind of access, ramps, elevators, et cetera. It was equitable to make those changes so that individuals who needed those kinds of supports could be treated equally. There are many people in our community who are at a disadvantage when it comes to being treated equally. That's just a real, simple example. But if you asked, um, any, if you ask people with disabilities, have they been treated equitably by opening up voting and being assisted with registration and being, uh, at ease to get into voting, the polling places? Um, to me, that's, that means that we're creating an equitable environment so that people can experience equality.
Supervisor Gifford, then Supervisor Dodge?
Yeah, you know, we went around and around about this a couple months back, and I said, um, then the same thing I'm gonna say now. And I read out the Merriam-Webster dictionary definition of equity, and it was something like, uh, treating people justice and fairness, impartiality, et cetera. Because it seemed that there was an organized, uh, group uh, working to undermine the work of the diversity and inclusiveness committee by redefining our language for us. There was one comment that, uh, equity meant socialism, you know? If we're gonna govern ourselves, we have to govern ourselves from a common understanding. Uh, you know, some people cite the Constitution. Okay, well, then, let's have a common understanding of what words mean, uh, when we're gonna say something. So, if the word equality were replaced, uh, in place of equity, you know, it's a slight difference. I'm not gonna object to that. But, uh, understand that equity means justice, fairness, impartiality, you know, just the normal, common sense, uh, consensus reality that we need to operate and govern ourselves. Thank you.
Supervisor Dodge, then Supervisor Splinter?
If you remember that discussion, um, we talked about Webster's dictionary definition of equity. And there was a county board supervisor that had a totally different description of equity. So I guess somewhere in here, we ought to state that we're going to use Webster's dictionary for the definition of our terms because I think that's very important and, you know, it makes a difference.
Who did I say was next? After Supervisor Splinter, then Supervisor Neville?
Again, I, I think when we have a code of conduct, it should be clear and, and, uh, to everyone and without a subjective term in there. Uh, equi, I'm 70 years old and I, I've hardly ever in my life heard the word term equitable or, until recently. Uh, and then, again, to repeat, I had one of the county board meetings, we had like three different definitions of it. Uh, and equality, to me, has one definition. Uh, equity, it could be, it could be swayed any which way. And I think to keep it clear and concise, uh, to everyone, equality, I think, is the better word. I'd like to see equity eliminated from future resolutions as I, as again, it, it has subjective meanings to a lot of different people, and I think we gotta be clear and concise when we make these resolutions. Thank you.
Supervisor Neville?
I would, I would not think that replacing equity with equality is a good, um, I don't think that conveys the meaning of fairness. If the word is to be replaced, I think it would be replaced with fairness. Fairness is a pretty common word, and I think people have a pretty good idea about fairness. That seems to fit. So I would be opposed to changing equity to equality.
Supervisor Gussel?
I think that any definitions or any of these wordings in these ordinances should have a definite meaning so that it can't be misconstrued in a different manner. You should choose words that are to the point, that you don't have to take the part of.
Anybody from home? Have any? Supervisor Pataki?
Mr. Chair, I agree. I'm listening to all these words, and as far as I'm concerned, I think the word fairness, uh, that Supervisor just mentioned a couple minutes ago is within the word, I mean, fairness is, you, how can you say there's a, it, it, it has different meanings?
Anybody else from home? Okay, we have an amendment on the floor to change the word equity to equitable? Equality, sorry. Start this over again. So, uh, we have a, a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed?
No.
The, and the clerk will call the roll.
We vote by phone?
You wanna try it? Okay, everybody, uh.
I should say.
It should pop up.
So, we're voting on the.
Amendment.
Equity, equality.
Yes. I don't see it either, Kayla.
Mr. Chair, I've lost connection, but I will vote in the affirmative of the amendment.
Hold on. We're just going to have the clerk, we're going to have the clerk do a roll, roll call, folks.
My apologies.
Yep.
Supervisor Haga.
Aye.
Supervisor Morrow.
Aye.
Supervisor Pataki.
Nay.
Supervisor Dubek.
Aye.
Supervisor Robbie.
Nay.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nay.
Supervisor Gussel. Supervisor Reeser. We lost him. Okay. Supervisor Splinter.
Aye.
That was an aye? Supervisor Dodge.
Yes.
Supervisor Matt Jakowski.
Aye.
Supervisor Jenkowski.
No.
Supervisor Gifford.
Nay.
Supervisor Lattick.
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Supervisor Neville.
No.
Supervisor Rakowski.
Yes.
Supervisor Zastro.
Nay.
Supervisor Martinson.
You're muted Supervisor Martinson. Or thumbs up or thumbs down?
No. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Not a lip reader. Supervisor Madine.
Aye. Aye. I lost my voice. Aye. You got mad there?
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
And Supervisor Honnell. Okay, so we have nine for, 10 against, six excused. So amendment failed.
So would anyone like to make an amendment? Supervisor Robbie?
I would. Before I make the amendment, I would remind or just to state that we have people who spend their lifetime discussing our documents and the words that are in our documents. So to say that there's no ambiguity regarding words or that we could ever create a document where there wasn't some ambiguity, I think is wishful thinking. Having said that, I would like to exchange the word equity for fairness because I would like to make sure that, I would like to think that people can support that as opposed to a word that some people have more concerns with.
Second. So we've got an amendment to change equity to fairness by Supervisor Robbie, seconded by Supervisor Johnson. Any other discussion on this topic? If not, on the amendment to change it to the word fairness, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carried. We're getting closer, guys. What's next? Anybody else? Anybody at home have anything? Supervisor Neville.
Under letter F, number two.
F two.
Where it says a person may submit a verified complaint to the Office of Court Counsel. What's verified mean?
What's verified mean?
What's that? I mean, since in number one, anybody can submit, can come to the chair about a perceived violation, but then in number two, then anybody can submit a verified complaint. I just wondered what is meant by verified complaint, verified in.
What's the criteria?
The way that phrase is used in section 3.6 of our ordinance means that the complaint filed with my office, who then has to determine whether or not the complaint should move forward to the Ethics Committee, which now is the Executive Operations Committee because we did away with the Ethics Committee, means that the complaint must be based in fact versus opinion essentially. So it's got to be verified by factual allegations, just like a regular complaint that you would file in court.
So I guess what kind of confused me is so in number one, if somebody thinks there's a violation, they can go to the chairperson. Mr. Haga.
Or whoever that is. Or whoever that may be as the document goes forward.
So I guess. So that same person could come to you with something verified. I mean, it's not steps, in other words, it's not you present it to the chair of the board and then it moves to you.
Right. I do not believe it's you have to do number one first, then then number two. These are just options and alternatives. I will tell you though, Mildred, that whether it's on there, it follows that path anyway. I usually get the calls, the emails, the conversations about the stuff. But it really doesn't even specify on there what the chair should do with that information, so.
I guess that's what I wasn't clear about is so. What, what's the point of number one? Just you can do that.
Yeah, it's, we've got other ordinances and things that don't seem like they have any finality to it or whatever. And that doesn't seem like it has a direction to it or it has any, any follow up. So on number one. The number one says, any person who has reason to believe that the code of conduct has been violated, may contact the Portage County Board of Supervisors chairperson and report the details of the previous violation to the chair. Okay, then what? I mean, it's, at that point, I guess it's my responsibility to direct them to go to Corp Counsel. I guess my response would be, it depends. We can all think up a hypothetical situation of what the facts might be. It's just offering another outlet, an alternative to somebody who's got, you know, suggestions or not necessarily answers to somebody who's got a gripe or a grievance if they want an opportunity to bring it forward, but they don't want to go through the formal step of filing an actual written complaint. Maybe it doesn't, you know, it's not all that important to them. Maybe they feel they missed a point, so they want to consult with somebody. Just because it says in number one, the county board chair, I mean, as the chair points out, he may decide if somebody came to him to direct the individual elsewhere, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Jikmatjakowski.
Thank you. And I guess maybe this will help answer Mildred's question a little bit. And maybe this is how I see it, and it's maybe not how Chairman Haga interprets it or Corporation Counsel interprets it. Our Corporation Counsel office is a busy office. They're doing tons of things. They got CHIPS, TPR. And when he reports to our committee, which I happen to chair, he never tells me that they're for lack of work. But I can see that maybe somebody has a complaint and we make controversial decisions. There's decisions that we made tonight that are probably controversial to somebody. Somebody may be hot under the collar, mad about it. They'll contact Al because Al gets those emails. He stated that earlier and they'll say, this person said this, 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 and this. And Al will say, well, if you would go back and listen to the tape, you're misconstruing that. You're adding words that they didn't say. Al can settle it at that point in time and that person settles down and they maybe say, yeah, Al, I guess you're right. I was just a little hot under the collar and it's done. If they feel it needs to go further, if Al feels it needs to go further, he takes it to Corporation Counsel's office. If we don't have that step in there, Corporation's Counsel's office is going to be bombarded with a bunch of emails that they don't need to see and that they don't need to spend time on. Emails, phone calls, whatever. So I think it's maybe a good first step that they consult with Al and Al will say, well, I think you're reading into it because we can go back. Let's watch the video together. They never said that. But sometimes what's said in what the viewing audience or even a fellow supervisor hears is different than what was actually said. And maybe Al can offer a little mediation. Hey, let's get together with the person that said that. Maybe that isn't what they meant. So I would like to keep that first step in there. I don't want to see getting rid of that.
I, I guess I can see the value of it, but at the same time, it needs more because of the fact that some of the things that I heard you say is consult with. And it doesn't say that. It doesn't have anything in there, you know, that you're looking for, to consult with the county board chair to see if it rises to such an area of an offense. So those are just some of the things that I'm looking to the rest of you or anyone to help with.
I think we need to leave some things up to your leadership abilities. That's why they pay you the big money.
Right. But it doesn't say that in here. It doesn't even say that they're supposed to just get my opinion or input from the chairperson.
Our ordinance doesn't say that someone's speeding. It says that they should get a ticket, but it's sometimes up to the officer's discretion if they have a clean driving record, haven't been pulled over forever, that they let them go. You know, you have to have a little of that discretion. If you spell it out here step by step, we're going to have a document that weighs more than I do.
Wow. Big document. You know, I can think of a resolution that's before us or an ordinance that we have that doesn't have any finality to it. And it's the one that talks to if you want to put something on an agenda. It says that you must bring it forward before the chair of that committee and you have 60 days to bring it forward. The chair has to put it on the agenda. It says if they don't put it on there in 60 days, that you talk to the county board chair. Okay, someone comes in and has a conversation with me, then what? What, what do I, what per ordinances or directions or bylaws am I required or has to happen? There's nothing. There's no finality to it. There's, it's open ended. And, and I feel that some of that exact same thing is here. And we have just had that discussion, you know, about a week ago about that particular case. So I guess I'm trying to bring it out so everybody understands what we're up against and what I'm trying to button up and make sure we don't have in the future. It's something that when we're all not sitting here and when I'm not sitting here, what was the intent of this? What is the direction or what did we want them to do?
I believe, Mr. Chair, I believe that instance is in Robert's Rules of Order. I'm not, I don't have my book in front of me. But I, I think you as a chair are required to put it on then according to Robert's Rules of Order. I'm not 100% sure on that. But if I remember right, there's, and we've adopted Robert's Rules of Order. So sometimes we have to refer back to that and I realize that not everything's cut.
Right.
Based and clear.
Supervisor Johnson, then Supervisor Pataki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm agreeing with Supervisor Jakowski on this and about the adoption of Robert's Rules and its guide really to help us conduct business. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, if this is adopted, this document is adopted, doesn't this then hold the county board chair to certain comportment and expectations regardless? So if someone comes to the county board chair and county board chair refuses to do anything about it, the county board chair would probably be in violation of this very, very set of standards. So I don't know that we necessarily have to delineate every action the county board chair would take. But this code of ethics is that broad outline. The county board chair would have to treat people with fairness and consistency and inclusion, right? So I think we've got the guts of what this should be in the language already without, as Supervisor Jakowski says, making this a document that would, you know, weigh a half a ton and have to be moved by a forklift.
He didn't say half a ton. He had his head up with that.
Yeah, well, I'm used to speaking in terms of tons, so that's just my brain. So, thank you. No, 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 never, never.
Supervisor Pataki. You got your mute on Stanley. Stanley, you're muted. Thank you.
As Supervisor Jakowski said, our Corp Counsel is busy. With the way I look at this, if we do have a supervisor, anybody who has a complaint, they should go to the county board chair. However, we don't have anywhere if there's a complaint against the county board chair. So I would think more at number two, for somebody to go to the Corp Counsel, it would be someone who has a complaint against the county board chair, not you.
Well, and I believe that that goes probably something else without saying though that we're all supervisors first. So anything that goes to the Corp Counsel or even the complaint about staff or anything, it goes to Corp Counsel. So I don't know if we need to spell out in number two that if you have a complaint against the county board chair, that you take it to Corp Counsel. That should, that should be probably something that's understood. Anybody else have any Supervisor Gifford?
Yeah, we commenting on the whole.
Go ahead. Yep.
Okay, yeah, now that's what I want to speak to and direct it to the members of the public who came in to comment. And as always, I appreciate having public input. All things considered, I'd rather have a lot of public participation than not a lot. But this is a code of conduct for the county board members. So this code of conduct is not to define how the members of the Portage County constituency or all the citizens are to behave themselves. It's not to tell members of the public what to think or how to speak among themselves or whatever. It's a code of conduct for us to follow. And I just wanted to make that clear. You know, it's, it's good to have a dialogue with the public about things with which they disagree. And there's always the option every two years, run for the county board and put up your own platform and set of ideas, values, beliefs and run on those, you know? But once you're in the county board, you're going to be bound by a code of conduct. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments? Supervisors Astro.
If we look at the resolution itself under the fifth whereas.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. One, two, three, four, five. Go ahead.
Okay, it could just be me and I wouldn't be shocked to see that. But does that read kind of goofy towards the tail end of it? The meetings who are either appearing or responding to inquiries or questioning from any harassment, insulting remarks or conversation? I guess I'm, the word questioning, should it just be questions? I don't know. I'm asking if anybody else sees that. It just reads kind of goofy to me.
I think questions are questioning if somebody's being questioned, questioning.
Yeah, it just doesn't read right though to me. Understand the meaning of the word, but. Does anybody else see that? Or is it just me? If it is, we'll move on.
Go either way.
I see it.
You do? Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Neville.
I think it's partly parallel construction and it should be responding to inquiries or questions.
Are you making an amendment?
But.
That would be a Scrivener's error.
How that I have support, I'll make an amendment to change questioning to questions.
Scrivener's? I don't, okay, so that's not, that doesn't change the context of the. So it was one that was brought up earlier?
I would say so, yes.
Supervisor Neville, was this one of, one of the questions that you brought up earlier with Corp Counsel and?
No.
It was not.
False. I felt in the same category, but I didn't see that until now.
Yeah, that's fine. So we'll make it sound better. We have the authority under the Scrivener rule because it's not totally changing the intent of it. Mildred had talked about a few items in here and they will be corrected and changed, so.
So I don't need to make a motion. I withdraw my motion.
So. There'll be a final copy sent out and to everyone after it's rewrite. But Supervisor Neville did talk to Corp Counsel and the county clerk on a few other items that did not change the intent of the resolution, so. If there is no other discussion, I want to thank everybody tonight for this uh Supervisor Neville.
I'm sorry, on the next, the two more whereas is the second whereas from the bottom. The word unjustified verbal accusation. Um. Let me. I mean, I guess I was just puzzled about what 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 this was getting at. Like I didn't know what what kind of accusation would be justified. What's just what's unjust? I don't know. It just wasn't clear to me what this was getting at.
Dave?
Nope.
If everybody else understands it, maybe they could explain it.
Dave, anybody else? I believe you could call the vote because the whereas is provide background information and are not part of the resolution. Um, they're not part of the resolution that goes on record. Um, they may be stored someplace, but they are not part of the action we take. They provide background information.
And I think what we were getting at there with that uh word choice is, I mean, when you come right down to it uh to Supervisor Neville's inquiry, you can have uh a justified accusation of somebody. I mean, if 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 the exchange, again, these are all hypotheticals, and that's what we attempt to address to some extent in a lot of these whereas background clauses, but if there's an exchange during a meeting and a supervisor, for example, or um, you know, makes makes a comment to anybody in attendance, be it a fellow supervisor, uh staff, members of the public, and accuses somebody of something, and it's a completely unfounded, unjustified accusation. That's, I think, what we're trying to illustrate here. We're we're and we're saying that's that's a bad thing. If people do that, we don't want people to do that. We want to encourage the opposite. And I. Okay, any other discussion? I just I just wanted to say, though, that the whole intent of this was that not just one incident, not two, not three, not four, not five, maybe six. I've been county board chair for about a year and a half or three years, I should say, and I've had probably five or six different incidents that have come up and uh over that term where people have reached out to me or expressed concerns about situations or how things were handled. They were surprised to find out we didn't have anything. I've talked to people outside. They were said they were surprised, and as I looked, other counties all had codes of conduct. We had a code of ordinance uh which addresses more or less monetary, uh and that would be we had a supervisor a while back that had a business. We couldn't do business with him because of our code of ordinance because they felt that someone could profit from it. That was about all that was in there. We don't have anything else that has any kind of rules that talks about it, or we wouldn't be doing this. So uh a lot of this is is trying to have something, a starting point, and it's trying to be able to have debate and have uh discussion in a professional manner and make sure that everybody's held to the same standard. That is the main focus or the main part of the goal when we set forth to try and figure out what we could do and how we could accomplish this, and I appreciate everybody's input tonight because I think it was all very good discussion, and I I say this, uh that I've tried to look at different ways to make sure that we've got twenty-five people that have a very different backgrounds and thoughts and and upbringings and age groups and everything in in this, and we're all here together to try and work to make sure that we can do what's best for Portage County. Sometimes it gets a little heated, and we have to make sure that we can keep ourselves controlled even in the co- uh separate meetings, whether it's the county board meetings, and hopefully this will help to do some of that. There's other counties when their code of conducts, they had monetary up to a thousand dollar fines, and I when I brought this forward, I thought that was a little, that was a little off, and basically what this comes down to is a a public shaming is is uh if someone uh has to go before the committees, and again, it's we do have a a a kind of a ethics committee, and it's the executive operations plus two people from the public are brought in uh to that committee as well, and those people decide whether it rises to the to the uh an offense or not, and then it's just a letter that says that you shouldn't be doing what you're doing and please behave. That's about all it is, and and we're not here to try and curb anybody's input. We're we want to hear from all the supervisors. We're not trying to make sure that anybody is stifled, so. I just wanted to make that that clear and and understood some of the background that goes along with this, so. If there's no other questions or comments, uh we have a motion and a second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hi, Supervisor Jankowski.
Just want to remind the supervisors that Space and Properties Committee meets tomorrow at three thirty at the jail. We will be touring, looking at the deficiencies that we have and some of the deferred uh projects that need to be addressed, so three thirty tomorrow at the jail.
We'll do adjourn.
Thanks for reminding me, Don. I got a motion by Supervisor uh Zastro to adjourn, uh seconded by Supervisor Dodge. All those in favor of aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.